I call the November 26, 2018 work session meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And Madam Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Semis?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. And tonight we have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission that was postponed because of the hurricane. And I understand that Amy, you'll chair tonight's meeting.
Yes.
Will you call your meeting to order?
I would like to call the joint session with the Planning Commissioners and City Council to order. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I call, we use, I say present, Commissioner Williams.
(coughing)
Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Youngblood.
Present.
Commissioner Gee.
Present.
Commissioner Daxton.
Present.
Commissioner Rick.
Present.
The five members of the Planning Commission are present.
We have a quorum. And first, thank you for agreeing to meet with us, and I hope that everybody had a grand Thanksgiving.
(coughing) Good.
And this is the holiday season, so I know that this has taken on time from your own personal schedule. And on behalf of council, we thank you for being here tonight, but most importantly, thank you for serving our community. And with that, Dr. Pat.
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, during tonight's public work session, Planning Director Bob Baldwin and Planning Administrator, Mr. John Hartley, will lead a discussion of two important elements of the zoning ordinance rewrite project. Number one, zoning philosophy. And number two, the zoning use table. As you will recall, these items were originally scheduled for the joint work session during the September 27, 2018, but was ultimately canceled due to Hurricane Florence. To assist in tonight's work session, you have two handouts, including a description of some of the philosophies contained in the current zoning ordinance of 2010, as well as a copy of the zoning use table. These materials are the same that were provided to you in September, and in your, in the box on your iPads are all of this information. Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Dr. Pat. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Semis, members of City Council, Vice Chair Thompson, and members of the Planning Commission, and good evening. And certainly glad to be taking part in this conversation. Again, as has been noted, this was a rescheduling from back in September. These are two items that City Council had indicated they wanted to spend more time discussing as part of the zoning ordinance project. And before I get too deep in that, I do want to make two quick introductions, just for your information. Over here on my right is Melissa Simpson with the consulting firm of WSP, and they are now assisting us in the rewrite project. And on the other side of the room, we have Julie Chop, our new planner, and we're...
Would you stand up, please? But if you so will.
Thank you.
So Julie is in note-taking mode here tonight. So we're going to jump right in here. And as we indicated, this really originated from City Council wanting to discuss both the philosophy of the zoning ordinance, as well as some discussions on the use table. And just for general background, I think most of you recognize the primary purpose of the zoning ordinance is to regulate land use, and the state code would describe providing for the orderly development of land. That's the general enabling legislation language. But, you know, buried within zoning ordinances, and this applies to all zoning ordinances, not just ours, there are certain philosophies that each community applies in their zoning ordinances. They craft a zoning ordinance to accomplish what they want. This can be recommendations out of a conference of plan, or other community standards they want recognized through the zoning ordinance. And that's one reason when you go community to community, even when within a region like Hampton Roads, you can find wide variety in zoning ordinances and zoning regulations, as each community tries to craft the type of land use regulations they think are most appropriate for them. So that's really, in this case, trying to get to what are the community standards, or City Council is the spokespeople, so to speak, for the community in this regard, since the zoning ordinance is a legislative act of council when you adopt it. So we're attempting to get to the community standard when we do this. And when we go back to 2010, and we'll go back to the process a little bit before 2010, there were certain philosophies that are what I would call embedded or incorporated within the zoning ordinance. Now, to most people, casual users, you may not be aware, it just looks like a set of regulations. But when you get kind of down deep into it, you see there were specific goals and objectives the city was attempting to accomplish through the zoning regulations. And some of the more common ones, we've attempted to extract these out, thinking this might be helpful as you get in the conversation. We'll just walk through a few of these, because you may, because I want to talk about two different aspects. One is the philosophy, and then the next one is how the zoning ordinance executes that through regulation, and just sort of put that in the back of your mind for future conversations. We'll talk about being developer-friendly. And the process that led up to the 2010 ordinance, one of the goals was try to create an ordinance that was developer-friendly. It wanted to have more by right uses and fewer use permits. And I think for those of us who'd worked with the prior ordinance compared to this one, that's certainly been accomplished. It wanted to have more mixed uses. There was a philosophy of mixing uses being better, provides more opportunity for developers. So there was just a specific intent to create more mixed-use district. One of the philosophies that was embedded in the zoning ordinance is that developers preferred if you just let them know what the rules are, and that would help them to comply. And so we have more defined, what we call prescriptive standards, mandatory regulatory requirements that are built into the zoning code. The spoken intent at the time was to try to make sure developers knew exactly what the city was looking for, and to use those prescriptive standards to serve as an alternate having people go through use permits for sort of case-by-case conditions being applied. And type-two site plan, I think you've heard me mention this enough times, we've abandoned the use of the type-two site plan, since that was a process that was handled through the Planning Commission, and determined that the Planning Commission does not have authority to modify zoning standards, as the 2010 ordinance was doing through the type-two site plan. So that process has been abandoned. There was a philosophy of raising the bar on development. This came straight out of the 2005 Conference of Plan Destination 2025, where there was a community desire to raise quality just across the board citywide. And how was that done? Again, it was done through prescriptive standards, additional development standards that weren't in place in 2000, prior to 2010. And there's another section code, again, we'll get to in a future meeting, when we talk about nonconformities, a section there on nonconforming site aspects that we'll want to spend some time discussing. Design versus use base, I think this is one of the things that council's been most vocal in opposition to. This is our form-based code districts, the D2, and in most cases, the D1, where you've got design base, in other words, the code was describing what it wants buildings to look like, what it wants uses to look like, with the theory being that if you design it the right way, the uses will follow. So it's much less of a ordinance based on uses, more based on design parameters. There's also a different kind, as you recall, designed by street frontage, not a parcel-by-parcel. The street frontage says the buildings ought to look like this, and that became the zoning. And within the D1, of course, we have what we call the smart code, that's the transects, and you see that described as those T districts. We bring things forward in the downtown, you see the T1, actually, the T3, 4, 5, and 6 is what we actually have there, with 6 being most intensive. The other thing, the code wanted to be much more bike and pedestrian-friendly, and so that was done through by adding parking maximums. Those have since been revised, and we redid the parking standards, and those were removed. Had shared parking requirements. It had extensive parking and screening requirements, tried to hide cars and make them less visible in the environment. It established for the first time minimum bike standards for parking bicycles and different uses. Has requirements for linking uses to the sidewalks and pedestrian ways. And probably the biggest thing people are aware of, in the downtown, in the D1 area, no parking requirement. So the uses downtown have no minimum parking requirements, and that came about.
Appreciate it.
So to me, as we talked about philosophy, just want to give you something to get kind of thinking about a little bit, but that was sort of some of the basic philosophies. I think there's an overriding one, we're all recognizing the code intended to be much more urban and less suburban, more density. And that got kind of built in through those same things. But that was sort of the philosophical underpinnings that developed the 2010 ordinance. And so when you look at that, you can look at what's your philosophy, what are you trying to accomplish? And then the next thing we'll, you know, have to obviously do is create the regulatory environment to create that. And so we can certainly talk, if you have any questions about that tonight, about, you know, how things work today. But with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn the conversation back over to you, and see, you know, if council has any specific philosophical or Planning Commission as well, any philosophical points you want us to take a look at. I would just mention, we're in the reconstruction part of the zoning ordinance now. We've kind of deconstructed what was wrong with before as we start and move forward. It's really critical to get council to advise what is it you want these regulations to accomplish, and what's going to be your zoning philosophy as we move forward.
Before we get into the philosophy of the 2010, are there any questions from what Bob has presented on this slide? Okay.
Okay. I was just wondering, when a citizen or a developer goes in to fill out an application or permit, is there an excerpt from the zoning code that is applicable to their little section, you know, so they wouldn't need the whole zoning code, but if they're doing something specific to one area, is there like an excerpt in their permit somewhere so that they will be drawn into what is required?
Unfortunately, this current zoning ordinance is all interconnected with other pieces, so there really isn't one. I mean, there's certainly a place you can find out whether the use is allowed by right or not allowed, or needs a use permit. And we can certainly look up standards that would apply, but there's a whole number of issues that can come up depending on your location. Are you in a flood zone? Are you in a Chesapeake Bay area? Are you in a historic district? So there really isn't one place to go to get some simple, under the current code. Now, the current code is very intricate, you know, there's a lot of interrelated pieces, one section of the ordinance to another. So generally, it's much more involved to try to get to the answer, depending on the question. Now, sometimes these are relatively simple, but sometimes they can be relatively complicated.
The follow-up on her question, how many separate documents make up the zoning ordinance?
Well, what we would, what we typically would call the zoning ordinance itself is contained in three major documents. One of them, we've been slowly dismantling the D2 district. As you know, we've been working on the parking, we've been rolling the D2 standards into the city, the primary zoning ordinance, so we've been slowly deconstructing the D2 form-based code piece. The D1 standards, for example, they are contained within a larger plan document, you have to go find those. That's much more convoluted, I have to tell you, for people to have to go and search for that within a plan document. It's not what I would call, it's not illegal zoning practice, I just find it to be not the best zoning practice for that.
Short answer to Lisa's question is that, no.
No, yeah. I think that's...
But I think that would probably be helpful to some developers or citizens when they're going in and they, you know, say they're going to, you know, put some new windows in, in a historic district, then, you know, that particular part of the code that would apply to their permit or their application, if it could be like an insert or a highlight or the aerodrome to it or something, you know, so that they don't have to, you know, search the whole zoning ordinance to find where they need to be compliant.
Yeah, and we've taken from some of our previous work sessions, and one of your looking for is a simplified, more streamlined ordinance. I think that's kind of along the lines of what you're describing there, it's a little bit more detail.
More user-friendly.
But more user-friendly.
Right.
Mark Billups asks for the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. When do you anticipate the reconstruction of the D2 to the form-based code redo being completed?
Well, the D2 piece, you may recall, we came back to council a few months ago, and showed you the concept of what the uses would look like. We're now working on the overlay district that would sit on top of that, that's underway. So I'd say probably, you know, within 60 to 90 days.
That would be...
Now, we need to go back out and meet with the community that we met with during the plan process, we did with MDC, we went out and did the land use plan that we based the zoning off of, and checked back in with, you know, the business owners and the community out there. But we should be able to put together that, because we're now basing, we're linking it back to the standard zoning pieces. What we have to do now is be able to go through and sort of, within the D2 districts, a very large land area, a lot of different kind of land uses, we'll need to go in there and carve out some specifics, and then we're working on that now.
If a developer comes to planning tomorrow morning, since some of these pieces are in the reconstruction stage, to use your word, what do we give them, what do we tell them about the zoning that they need, or the permits that they need? Are we basing that on current, or what is, what will be in the next 60 to 90 days?
It depends on what they're asking, you know. If they want to do something simple, or something that's relatively, you know, provable under the current code, which a number of things have been, we'll just say, you know, you're within the D2 zone, you're allowed to do these things, especially if they're within an existing building or an existing site. If it's something different, if it needs a rezoning, if the use needs a rezoning, we're telling them to rezone it based on what we showed City Council a few months ago, to follow the proposed new D2 district. And we would advise them that that's, that would be the direction we would recommend they'd go to use that. And they could come in and request a rezoning based off of that.
Off the new zoning?
Off the, exactly. What would be the new zoning?
Okay, thanks.
And Amy's asked for the floor, and please, this is a joint meeting, so let me know if you want the floor. Amy?
I think, first, I have a comment. Initially, I look at developer-friendly and then more prescriptive, and to me, that is really dictating what they can or cannot do. So my initial thought was that that seemed a little contradictory. And then, to your point, I agree with what you're saying. I mean, if we want people to come in, and I assume this extends into redevelopment, and especially in our historic neighborhoods, there's, I've heard discussions about, you know, in particular, historic guidelines being a detriment to people wanting to come in and do it. So I just think that if we're talking about the philosophy, and we're trying to be more developer-friendly, and we want our neighborhoods to be revitalized, then that's something that we should consider at this point.
Other comments? Elizabeth?
I think all of us would look at this 2010 philosophies, you know, and today, we still want to be developer-friendly and raise the bar on the quality, and be bike and pedestrian-friendly in the downtown area. Design base versus use base is sort of your bailiwick, but realizing that, like, the bike and pedestrian stuff was where we got into so much crazy trouble with, like, the apartment buildings, all of a sudden, were required to have 100 bicycle parking, I mean, some crazy number of bicycle, because, which didn't make sense. Nobody and their right man would park all those bicycles outside. And that's where we really got into trouble, to me.
Right.
And developer-friendly, to me, and my past experience, means that the city is not going to hit them first with no, that they'll say, well, let's talk about it, let's try to work through it, let's look at what we can do, rather than just turn them away and say no. That's what developer-friendly means to me, because in the past, I've seen, been involved with the Historic Commission in my previous tenure, there were some real hard-line folks that would come in and says, oh, no, no, you aren't going to do that. You know, I mean, they were like judge, jury, and all, when they needed to, you know, find out more of what developer's capability was, and what he could do and could not do, or wanted to. And it's just not a flat no. It's just, okay, well, let's, how can we work through this? How can we make it happen? That's what it means to me.
I think, and again, I'm speaking for me, not for anybody else, I think these are lofty goals, but they failed. It was not developer-friendly.
That's what I agree.
When Wendy's could not develop, when a storage building couldn't be developed, when I say storage building, you know, a storage rental place because of its height, that's not too developer-friendly. And I agree with Ray, we need to have a plus-work-to yes. Certainly, we all want quality development. The bike thing is interesting. It's almost, are you kidding? You know, I got to have bike racks at a grocery store?
You know, that was applied to the...
Krogers.
Krogers.
Yeah.
And they develop all across the nation, and they had never heard of such a thing. There have been more, almost more bicycles than automobiles in the parking lot.
It's hard enough to get your groceries to the car. You may have to try to get them home on a bike.
I don't see many people carrying their groceries away on a bicycle.
And then, I think design base kind of shot us in the foot on that one.
Versus use base.
And I mention that because as we move past, you know, the use, and we get into more of the reconstruction of the ordinance, we'll start getting into your regulatory standards. That's the execution piece. And I think what I hear you describe is that the intent to be developer-friendly was there. The way the code went about doing it was amiss. And we point out a number of things, which we've discussed with council and the Planning Commission before, some of the distance separation requirements, for example, that are built into that ordinance. We've had a number of people that have had to go to Board of Zoning Appeals to get variances for a number of uses all over town. Something just wasn't well thought through, as an example. So I use that as an example, but what I'm hearing is you want to make sure that, again, just to answer the question of what the intent was, you know, the intent was, if I tell the developers the rules, they'll be happy with that. It depends what the rules are. Right? And I think that's what you saw happen here.
And we need to do a good scrub, too, to make sure that what's on page 53 is not contradicted on 78.
And that we have a way to, I remember with the bike racks and the street frontage, there was no avenue for a variance, whatever. You couldn't go to City Council, you couldn't go to court, it was like, there was just no. Dend and go away.
Yes, sir.
The question I have, and I think this is a short eight years, and you look at the economy and the changes that the city and the country as a whole has gone through in that time period, what can we do to, and I don't know if variance is the right avenue, but what can we do to allow more flexibility and nimbleness of changes, so that it's easier on the planning department as well, to adjust for design style changes and requirements of the generations that, because if we look eight years from now, the individuals who would be looking to move into Portsmouth and develop in Portsmouth are in their teens and early 20s. So what can we do to make it easier for you all as well to make those changes?
A couple of things come to my mind. Number one is be careful about how prescriptive your standards are. We, as an example, we have a prescriptive standard for 40% glazing of windows, and then we run into a Wawa store that's in the Walmart parking lot, and it's a requirement to have windows on the inside where they'd have a cooler, because they were facing a street. That was a mandate, a design standard. So that just, again, some of those just aren't well thought of. But I think that one of the issues you're getting to, and we've discussed this before, is we've created it, it's in with the parking, and it's in with the signs, but using a special exception process, which would be a single trip to the Board of Zoning Appeals, not for a variance, but for an exception, modification. And that's probably a much better way to handle sort of basic design issues that don't rise to the level of City Council needing to get involved with the use itself, but might want somebody to have some ability to adjust the windows, or adjust the doors, or those type of things.
Bill's asked for the floor.
You know, that trip to the Board of Zoning Appeals, are we still charging $300 and semi dollars for that?
That was quoted to me today, 350.
350.
You know, I...
That's it.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I thought we had a conversation about that, that if, you know, we're talking about pro-business, you know, for me, if I want to request a zoning variance, go to a board, even before I go, I got to buy a ticket for $350. That's, to me, that's not citizen or business friendly.
Right.
And Dr. Pat?
And to speak to his form...
But you responded?
Yes. And today, that amount, that fee was quoted to me, which I thought was quite much, and it's more than, it impacts citizens. It may not be a business, but, you know, we have a citizen who wants to come before. And I said, my comment was, a citizen may not have $350. The issue that they would like to have considered or righted is very important to them, but if they don't have the money at that amount, then they can't come. So when we say, well, citizens don't come, we've told them this is their next step. Then it may be, as I said today, because they don't have the money to come forward. So this is something been in place, that fee, and in my tenure, it's not been discussed or revisited.
Well, I think we need to change it.
Along those lines, is the fee set in the zoning ordinance or in the budget ordinance?
It's in the budget ordinance.
It's in the budget.
And I just mentioned, the one reason that a lot of those fees get in there is we do have a mandatory legal advertising requirement. There's, and one of the requirements localities are generally made when the General Assembly describes what you're allowed to charge, that of course is also covered by the state code, is recouping direct costs. If we have to pay Virginia Pilot $400 for an ad, we've had that before, a legal ad costing $300, $400, $500. That's a lot of what that application fee is really not paying for the trip or paying for staff. It's usually been covering what I would call direct costs for those types of things.
Let's do this. I think there's sufficient concern that we should ask the city manager to look at the pros and cons of lowering the fee, and bring that back to both City Council and to the Planning Commission. How about that?
Okay.
Are there other accepted ways to advertise that?
Well, every year, there's a, someone goes to the General Assembly asking for some relief, and they always tell them no. There's been a, we recognize a lot, a lot fewer people taking the newspaper, reading the newspaper. And we've tried to move away from that, and the General Assembly, I don't know whether it's, for whatever the reasons are, but they've typically held pretty firm that you must advertise in a newspaper of local circulation. We have moved ours out of the legal ad, that's where they used to be back before 2013 or so. They were in the legal ads, it was much more expensive to advertise than legal ads. It doesn't require you to put it in a legal ad, it just has to be in a newspaper. So we've saved a fair amount of money over the years by moving it out of the legal ads.
That's a very good point, because the General Assembly starts in January. Is there consensus to ask the city manager to frame up a letter that council can endorse to our General Assembly delegation, asking them to change the state code to allow for alternate means of advertising?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Can you bring that back?
Yes.
Maybe as early as tomorrow?
Uh... No, I'm not, I hear you, you want me to bring, you want the letter to be ready by tomorrow, or some background?
Something that the council can endorse, that it can come from me on behalf of council...
Yes.
Asking our General Assembly delegation to either put in the legislation or support the legislation.
For alternate, okay. All right, we can have it tomorrow.
How many times a year do we collect on those fees? About how many, every month, two or three times a month?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you see the applications, the full, go back to the rezonings, use permits, they all have fees. Board of Zoning Appeals has its own fees for variances, they have their special exceptions. It's very light, it's just a handful, you know, varies, but, you know, one or two a month, maybe, on average.
Did the 2010 ordinance really have more by right uses than its predecessor?
Yes.
It did?
Yes. Used to be a lot more use permit applications. I can tell you from personal experience, the City Council used to get four, five, six use permits a meeting prior to the 2010 ordinance, when at least, back in the timeframe I was working before the recession. It definitely has cut down. It's definitely a smaller, now, since then, you've gone back, and we'll talk about that in a second, you've added some back in, but yes, there's definitely has fewer use permit requirements than used to be, replaced by prescriptive standards.
This may be drilling down too quickly to the details, but I think one of the philosophical discussions we need to have is whether or not multifamily development should be a by right use or a conditional use permit.
So...
Next slide.
Before we leave that slide, thank you for anticipating. Any other discussions about the overarching philosophies in the 2010?
I have a comment, Mayor. In looking at the documents you have in front of you, I think we have consensus from council and the Planning Commission, that the philosophy, developer-friendly, raise the bar, all of those philosophical are good, and still, you still want that specific...
Three out of four.
Three out of four, the design base.
Design base versus use base, all right, three out of four. Over the executions, we are not agreeing with the executions.
We'll work on that as we...
Therefore, the planning department needs to come back with different executions for what you are seeing, the three philosophies you want to move forward on.
And I would just add, Dr. Ben, the simplification philosophy.
Right, yeah.
The streamlined and simplification philosophy.
Okay. We're good.
So moving forward to your...
I just wanted to add one perspective that we have in staff, we, and all of you do also, deal with the citizens, the neighborhoods, and...
also, deal with the citizens, the neighborhoods. And when you start talking about this use permit versus non-use permit or permitted by right, I always have to keep in mind that tension between protecting existing neighborhoods from major changes. And I think all of you have seen some of that in the last couple of years and the permits that you've had before you. And being, quote, developer friendly, I mean, it's really, there's a tension between, there can be a tension between those two. And something that you ought to keep in mind, not just being totally developer friendly, but also treating neighborhoods with respect and protecting those things that make Portsmouth special at the neighborhood level. So just to throw that out on the table.
Well, I think some of the changes council did on the infill lot size addressed that very thing, that we realized that the communities were changing due to some of the larger lot sizes that were around in the 40s and the 50s and even the 60s. And people, the product that they were putting on those lots did not conform with the architecture of the communities. Well, and that's why what we're doing is so important, and it needs to be as good as we can make it, so we got the balance.
Now, let's tell there's no perfect. You know, we just can't shoot for perfect. We try to balance the community, the community interest. Back to the issue, we, as we've moved toward, we're talking about the use table, we thought it might be interesting to sort of focus a little bit on what you typically see under our use permit applications that make it to city council. And we, while you might have, you know, a one-off use permit for something, these are, these are the core of the use permits that come to city council on a regular basis. And I think you're familiar with all of them. Number one, we have the multifamily. That's, that was one that was not in the 2010 ordinance, was put back in. It preceded the 2010 ordinance. Use permit requirement was taken out in 2010. City council put it back in 2015. So that's the multifamily. We have a number of, you know, drive-through use permit requirements. And, you know, oddly enough, for example, you could build a, you know, 50,000 square foot store by right, put a drive-through window for a pharmacy, and it triggers a use permit. So we have a number of those. We always like to say, if we could have a standard for Chick-fil-A and something for everybody else, it'd probably be a lot easier because they really push the envelope on drive-throughs. Entertainment establishments, we've seen, obviously downtown, a number of issues come up with entertainment establishments, whether it was the mansion, the recent Greyhound, Pro's Greyhound Club. Those are all under our entertainment establishment definition. Convenience store with gas pumps, you know, that's the Wawas, the 7-Elevens. Convenience stores permitted by right, gas pumps permitted by right, put the two together, you need a use permit. And then the last one, of course, we see the telecommunication towers. These are the larger towers, not the ones that are rolling out under this 5G system. So those are the common ones. I didn't know if you wanted to start some conversation about, you know, where you are. Those are clearly the ones that, I think as Mr. Hart was noting, noting, you can have some differences of opinion, how you want to go. And obviously, you don't need to decide tonight. We're going to be coming back to you with staff, some staff input on the rest of the use table as we go along. But these are the ones we think council, since you see these all the time, would, might be most interested in weighing in on initially.
At the risk of sinking the ship, maybe we pick the easiest first, which would be drive-through windows, in my mind?
Yeah. Do you need?
How do you all feel about that? I mean, it makes no sense to me that you have to have a use permit on a 100,000 square foot building like Kroger for their drive-through. That doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't.
In a fast food restaurant, I mean.
They've got, they've got to have a drive-through.
That's what it is.
That's why it's fast food.
Right. There's no need to have a use permit for a drive-through window. It doesn't matter what the purpose is. It just, if it's going to meet all the other requirements.
And that really, we go back to our execution piece, having a design standard for how a drive-through doesn't block traffic in the street. And I always use my favorite example, it's the Hardees up at, yes, that's Tire Neck Road. What does it take? Everybody goes straight out into the street. That's what you're trying to avoid. That's why you have use permits. That's, those kind of old, you know, those are, you know, old buildings converted. The newer, newer fast food, they have this down. This is their business. And we generally don't have that kind of an issue. But that gives you an example of where the idea came for that type of a drive-through. But certainly.
That was a Simoco station.
That's just something that would be, if they did design it, not taking good things into consideration, that would be picked up in the site plan review.
Right. And we already have standards. We'll go through that later in a future discussion as we go through the execution pieces. We already have standards in there for stacking, not running over people coming out of a doorway, some of those kind of safety standards that are built in that are, use permit or no use permit are going to be applied.
For example, the Wells Fargo branch that closed on High Street in Churchland. If another bank that's not important wanted to come there now because there was a break, they would have to have a conditional use permit.
If the break was longer than two years, they'd need a use permit to reestablish the drive-through.
Well, is there unanimity on this issue that we're opposed to the new ordinance having a conditional use permit requirement for drive-through windows?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody got heartburn about that?
So there will be no conditional use permit needed for a drive-through?
Convenience stores with gas pumps, I want to take that one next.
Yeah.
Is there a rationale on that? That they're separate, they're okay, together?
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, that's an evolving land use. I know my staff hears me talk about it all the time. Like, we'll take a Wawa, for example, you know, that, or compare that to a 7-Eleven from 20 years ago, where the primary use was, you know, going in there and getting a Slurpee. Now you've got a restaurant inside, and like, what is that? You know, when we look at, what does a Royal Farms look like? You go in there, they've got fried chicken, and they're making sandwiches. And the use has really evolved. The original concept was, you know, if you, if you took a auto-intensive use, like people driving in to get gas, mix that with people driving in to go to the convenience store, you're creating traffic problems. And so the use permit would be to evaluate whether or not you're concerned with. But quite frankly, with the rare exception of like the 7-Eleven on Greenwood Drive that was built a couple of years ago, you just don't see them separate anymore. You know, you're not going to see anybody just build a service station like it's 1950.
No.
And you're just not going to get a convenience store like 7-Eleven when I grew up, and they didn't have gas pumps.
Footprints are much larger now, too.
They're large, they're different, they're laid out different. We have to accommodate trucks differently. But again, those are site plan, I consider those really site plan type issues, not, is the use okay? The use, if, you know, it's a commercial retail type of use, you're comfortable with no use permit. Then we'll talk to you about what kind of standards you'd want to apply on development. They can be either minor, or it can be hyper-restrictive. You know, that's, you get into that community standard.
It doesn't rouse to the occasion of needing a use permit.
All right. Well, let's do a quick poll. Is there unanimity on not having a conditional use permit for the next to last bullet?
Yes.
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 Okay.
The next and the last.
Let's go to towers and save.
The next and the last are the entertainment and the convenience stores?
Just the convenience.
Just the convenience.
Convenience gas.
Let's go to towers next.
Okay.
Who wants to weigh in?
I think they need to come for public conversation to keep the neighborhoods involved.
I agree.
They are our most passionate items.
Yes.
Okay. So that stays.
Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
And 10 years from now, when those 18-year-olds come along and the towers have changed, they can modify the.
With 5G rolling out, I mean, as we stated earlier, it won't be as much of an issue.
All right. Entertainment establishments.
I don't think we have a good description of what they are anymore. It's like, you know, the tiny little coffee shop on High Street could have a guy playing the guitar with a microphone, and all of a sudden, it's something different. And there's no alcohol or anything like that. It's all about the music.
Right. And so, John, you have the definition of entertainment establishment?
Over there to the 40th, if you go speed. Can you get through? Can you get through? There's wires. The chair's not moving.
And while we, when the logistics have tried to definition. This is kind of a good point. Do we really want to require conditional use permit for an acoustic guitar playing in a coffee shop?
Or the Hardees on Portsmouth Boulevard, they have people sing.
Jackson Churchland or?
Yeah, sure.
I think what happens, though, what can happen, their intentions might start out as an acoustic guitar. And it might evolve into, you know, a nightclub with amplified music. So I think with the use permit, it gives you leverage to make sure they conform to what the use permit was originally issued for. And that's an acoustic guitar or whatever.
Let me read the definition.
Yeah. What is it?
Current definition of an entertainment establishment. It says uses that offer some form of entertainment. For example, dancing, comedy performances, amplified music for patrons while on the premises. Entertainment establishments may serve alcohol, charge patrons a membership fee, and serve food for onsite consumption. So that's a very broad definition. We raise the question about whether the issue is more about live entertainment in combination with alcohol consumption. Is that more of an issue than somebody playing a guitar at McDonald's? As a, use that as an example. We, that would fall under the same entertainment establishment restriction, someone doing something like that. So it's a fairly broad definition. And so I guess part of what we, you know, depending on how council would want to do that, we could work on trying to refine the definition based on what you really want to have come before you.
Is a DJ in there?
It would be amplified music.
So the American Legion, on Upper Peach, wanted to have a DJ, they would have to have a.
Well, we wouldn't, if it was like, you know, some of these facilities have been doing that kind of activity over the years, are kind of grandfathered in. But if they were going to set up a DJ in there as a, as an activity, it's, the potential would be there.
But a comedy club.
Comedy club, definitely. It would be an entertainment establishment.
All of these issues, and going even back to the windows in the historic district, we can have all of the ordinance we want if we aren't going to follow up and make sure because they're enforced. If, you know, you go by the rules and you go down there and get approval for this particular type of window, and go through the steps to do that, and then the person next door doesn't bother and just puts them in. I mean, where does the enforcement aspect of it come? Same thing with the singing in the McDonald's or anything else, you know? Who's going to actually go in there and say, you have to have a use permit for that?
That's a good point. But that's an enforcement. Let's get the structure.
Yeah, that's what we need to focus the structure.
The only question I was going to bring up, we're talking about the difference between amplified music and acoustic. Majority places you go now, whether it's Behrens or anywhere else, you have one person that's acoustic, but they are amplifying the music. So very rare do you find anybody that doesn't have even minimal amplification with their microphone and the instrument they're playing. And that's pretty much anywhere you go now, if it's just one person, the guitar, it's still technically amplified. So I don't know if that's, you know, that's going to be a hard rule if we lean towards that definition because that almost covers everybody now.
And I'm just thinking, you know, looking at where we are today and, and the generation that is enjoying going out to dinner or being engaged, people like to hear music. And we're not talking, we're just saying guitar, things like that. Holiday season, we have nice restaurants or venues that may not have this use permit, that would love to have someone come in. Just, are they playing holiday music? Well, right now, that's prohibited because you can't do it if you don't have whatever that use permit is and go through the process. So I think as we look ahead, there are things that we've always had in place, but times have changed, and people are wanting to go where they can hear some music. And not any shouting, screaming, dancing, jumping through the windows, but just light music that would have to come back before a whole process to be able to do that. Just looking forward.
Go ahead, Bill.
Well, you know, I ask about a comedy club, and I think that would be one element that, you know, certainly wouldn't be disruptive, you know, to a surrounding community. That's not music. That's a performer. So, you know, something like that, I don't think should be included. But I hear what you're saying about the music. It's usually not the music that's the problem. It's the, it's the after-hours aspect.
Right. Just like the coffee shop.
Probably more alcohol-related than music-related.
Right. Let's just say the coffee shop. Coffee shop doesn't sell beer or wine or anything, just some coffee. If there was a guitarist that was just there playing some holiday music, they can't do it because they have to come back and get a use permit. So we have places that don't sell alcohol that would like to have. If McDonald's wanted, the new McDonald's want to just have some holiday guitarist in there, they can't do it because they don't have that use permit.
I think that what we're talking about is, is the music incidental to the operation of the, of the business, or is it the main focus of the business?
That's a good point.
To get down to mansion, the loud music was the focus of what they were doing.
Yes.
Greyhound, it was the same thing. That was the focus of what they were doing. If you go to the coffee shop, you're there to drink coffee and socialize. The music is incidental.
Right.
So I think that's really the dividing line here that we need to look at. That's a good point.
That's a very good point.
I actually would disagree. Pay that as a slippery slope. And it's funny, I had to do some Googling right quick. I think I'm the youngest at the table right now, though I still yell, get off my lawn at kids all the time. There's a culture of lounges, and a lot of them are, in fact, just coffee shops, which you, you go there for the combination. You go there for the live entertainment along with the baristas and everything like that. And it's something that, though, though we need to regulate, we need to welcome as well.
True.
Our, the Old Town is built for that, and that's what we're missing on the Fridays and Saturdays right now. So it's critical that we define entertainment establishments in a way that, we go back to the first slide, is welcoming to businesses, because that's really, really critical. I think that the, the alcohol and the dancing are very much differentiators from establishments that have music along with the atmosphere and performers along with the atmosphere. But we, I mean, it's, it's a very complicated dance that we're doing here. So I, I am more in favor of heavier regulation on this one, which would sound odd, but I think it has to be even across the board.
And I guess, I feel like you don't need to bother with it. I think you can open up Pandora's Box if you just didn't have any kinds of requirements.
You've got to have requirements.
And the types of establishments, you know, and that's the key. What is the type of establishment? What is their purpose?
Definition.
And unless you have some rules that they have to, and it shouldn't be difficult to come and get permission to do it, depending on, you know, what it is and what level, you know, they can't come in a little, little building and a little restaurant and then, you know, throw up a dance floor, and they only have like 10 tables in there, and then they pack the house. So I just feel like there's, we need, my vote would be to leave that alone, I guess, to, maybe if we can redefine it a little more.
I think it needs to be redefined.
But other than that, it should be there. We just need to do some tweaking.
And what are the best practices for other areas?
That's what we have to find.
I would love to see that. Other similar-sized communities with the same offerings, something that's, I don't want to use the term waterside, but on the side of water, and a historical district type, type offering.
In addition, this, these are, this is a very rich and big conversation. Is there a way to stratify this, where you go through degrees that as you become more intense, where conditional use permit is required? It's not easy to get a conditional use permit, maybe not even timewise. If you get the idea of, oh gee, it's November, I want to have entertainment December.
You're not going to get it.
You're not going to get it.
Yeah.
We'll work, we'll work on that. We could work on that.
I think best practice is a great idea. And I do share your concern, Ray, but I think that, you know, if we can find a way to be like King Solomon and divide the baby, that might be worth looking at.
When we can go back for historical reference, city used to require use permit for all restaurants, all restaurants, to get at this exact issue from years ago, we'd just throw everybody in. It's been refined over time. Obviously, it's been colored by time and changing interest in what the downtown is intended to be. For example, live entertainment, children's entertainment, it's kind of flowed back and forth as councils have sort of looked at what they're trying to create as an environment for downtown. For a while, when it was more children's museum, sports hall of fame, you know, that kind of activity, there was a real concern about it getting too much live entertainment that would, might be incompatible, adult oriented, might call it, entertainment. And that's always been that balance that's, that's come up in trying to refine this definition.
Elizabeth. Under your name. Yeah, okay, just checking. I think part of the stratification, to use your term, and where Kajie is going, is some of it has to do with alcohol. You know, you take a little building like Cafe Europa versus a little building like the coffee shop, there's a difference in what they might choose to do because, because of alcohol. It's not about the food, it's about the alcohol. And that may be a separator from, between the men and the boys.
Nate.
Just one thing talking about, you know, and I, I agree with Ray that we still need to be on top of and looking at it, but as Dr. Patton and the mayor said about somebody that wanted holidays music, is there some way that we could do something and offer a temporary permit for something limited? Like if they wanted Christmas music for one month?
Yeah.
Couldn't we, you know, maybe we could do something like that? Because we're not preventing them from having it because that's an established business that's already open that wants something temporary for a special reason, that we can grant that and then if they want to do it permanent, they could go through the process.
That's certainly doable if you would like something like that.
We could consider that and get back with you.
The only downside is, what's the definition of the music that they're looking for? I mean, if maybe during the holiday, you know, your definition of Christmas music and mine could be two different things.
I wouldn't base it on, I wouldn't base it on the music, but they would still have to come before us for the temporary. They'd have to explain what it is, what they want to do.
Make it easy enough for him.
And then we could evaluate what they tell us and go forward from there.
Yeah, it shouldn't matter what kind of music.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, we can't legislate on the content.
Right. Yeah, but my thing is you're, you're, you're going to give an entertainment permit for...
Music.
No.
Frequency.
For, for entertainment.
Music.
For participants.
Not necessarily.
Well, that's what the ordinance says.
So if they got it for 30 days, if I'm a business owner, okay, why, why can't I have it for the other 11 months?
Can if he comes back for the use permit.
You've got a note taker this.
Yeah, we've got, we've had...
Multiple us. He's now run out of the room.
It's our note taker.
We have a note taker.
I think we have a, we put a lot on the table.
Yes.
Can you synthesize this? Can you put it together and, and its options?
I think it's very clear.
Okay.
The answer may not be well ahead, but the direction is very clear.
Sure, yeah. I mean, you've got to process what we've said and make sense of it and then...
So we talked a minute.
This has got to be a function.
It's a lot of pieces here.
There's a consensus, not to put words in your mouth, there's a consensus, I think, not to do away with the conditional use permit entirely for entertainment establishments.
That's right.
Having said that, there's, Nate's idea is there's some temporary process that comes to council quicker and maybe even through the planning commission, but when you add two meetings, it's not that quick. And then all the other things that we said in here, how can we be nimble?
Mm-hmm.
I like that term.
Mm-hmm.
How can we be nimble to respond to what's changing around us?
That's right.
At the same time, you still want citizen input. I mean, this comes back to the doggone cell phone towers. We all know that that's a lightning rod and the citizen input has had a great influence on how you all have ruled on that. The same thing with, with the large entertainment facilities. Citizen input weighs heavily on, on us and I'm, I'm sure it does you too.
Probably more on us than on you.
Got to go through us first in a lot of cases and pass the buck to you.
Just advisory.
Only other thing, when we were talking about the temporary permit for music, we probably ought to put something in there, they can only do that once within a certain amount of time, so you don't have the same establishment coming every month trying to get a temporary permit to beat the system. So...
We've got that point.
Okay.
We're not bypassing the requirement entirely.
Any more discussion on this one? All right, let's go to multifamily. I think that's the last one, Ray.
Yes.
You want to break the ice?
Be glad to. As I mentioned the other, prior to 2010, the city required what was called a group housing permit, was the use permit for multifamily housing. City council back in 2015 raised concerns about, about that and requested that the zoning ordinance be amended, which it was. That's been in effect since 2015. I think since that time, you've probably had five or six applications that have passed through for use permits and, and one lawsuit as well. So I think that's sort of the issues you have before you. That's the, the combination of being, you know, trying to accommodate and promote development, trying to protect and be respective of the land use surrounding where the development is going and whatever level of, of regulatory oversight you want to have on some projects. And I do know from your comments on other issues tonight, there's a level of intensity that you're, you're getting into. So for example, we're all the way down to four units, you know, needing a use permit as opposed to maybe some of the larger projects you might see that might have, you know, 100, 200 type, type units. So there's some level of that as well. But generally speaking, what most people would end up doing if you're going to go with more of a, of a by right standard was to go back and be a little bit more heavy on the regulatory standard.
Something that you said that we need to be reminded of, maybe six months, certainly within this year as we've discussed this, that typically the requirement of a use permit for anything implies that you've got a concern about the use itself.
Correct.
And so maybe fundamentally, it starts with whether or not that spot is zoned correctly. Is that the best spot for multifamily? I could argue, once you make that decision, why have a conditional use permit?
Right. Now, one, one option used by some other localities, they have created multifamily zoning districts. Well, that would be a rezoning for someone as opposed to a use permit. But again, you'd be using a zoning process as opposed to a use permit saying, "That location is zoned for multifamily and then we'll let the developers, you know, do that." That's just one alternative. What we have obviously is multifamily as a use embedded within other districts.
On, on a use permit, I think most of us are aware of the use goes with property.
That's correct.
So a temporary use permit, that doesn't go with the property.
That's correct.
And so we can, we can...
And under normal circumstances, the use permit must be activated within two years. Obviously, in recent years, the general assembly has been shifting that date down the road starting during the recession. But the typical standard in the, in the code is that, once you get a use permit, you're supposed to take action within two years or the use permit will become null and void.
And that's state.
That's allowed by the state and incorporated within our zoning code.
Other comments?
You may have just said this and it didn't sink in. Our multifamily zoning currently, if we, if we took this square of this room and said it was multifamily, is there anything in it that says that only means so many per acre or so many, or is it anything more than four?
Right, well, the way our current, you're going the way the current code is structured? Yes, I mean, depending on which district you're in establishes density standards. And so, and I'll go back to the way it was before 2015. So you could be in a, whether it be downtown or, or one of the higher intensity residential districts and it would, it would say, you know, multifamily uses up to, you know, 27 units to the acre or up to. Obviously downtown, we have a much higher density standard, but that's the way they would normally be structured. So it would establish, you know, a, a density. You can establish whatever you want. You can establish a parking standard. In our case downtown, for example, we don't. You can establish open space mandates, you can establish orientation of the buildings, all those types of things. But the way they're structured is, it does have a density component to the, to the use depending on the district.
And this applies to condo development?
Yes. As I said, condo is a form of ownership, not a land use. That's multifamily.
Other thoughts on this?
Leave it alone.
Yeah, I tend to, I tend to agree with that.
I do too.
That's the lightning rod, like the towers.
It is.
Over the years. 300, then they come back, 280.
Right.
Then, you know, they change the numbers, then they...
I saw some heads nodding when Ray spoke. Do you all want to speak?
Oh no, he said enough. They should have went with three. They would have been good.
I'm going to throw one other twist out here for you. Because of the way our code is structured, you can vary that by district. I'll just throw that out as a, as an alternative. You, for example, could say, "No use permit downtown in the D1 district, for example, or the D2 district," and then require it wherever else you want it. That's one thing about the way the current code is structured, you can vary that by district. It's not a across-the-board requirement.
So I, I think it's been critical for the citizen debate on these, and I think that's where Ray's coming from on this. And if, I, I know you threw out the idea of the other type of zoning, the multifamily zoning. At what point would the citizen input come in with that?
Be just like a use permit.
Just like...
On the rezoning application. We don't have anything zoned for it currently. You'd have to zone for it.
The difference between rezoning is you're dealing with proffers, which are voluntary, whereas with the use permit, the city has the ability to impose conditions. So that's, that's a big distinction procedurally.
Well, proffer's only if it's conditional zone.
That's correct.
Yeah. Proffers don't come automatically.
Right.
This, didn't mean to ignore you guys.
No, I'm, I'm going hmm over the downtown part. To me, if it's zoned properly, we shouldn't be having to go back and talk about it again.
That's true.
Is it safe to say that it depends on the district? Whether or not a conditional use permit? And that's the way it is now. That if you were to do a multifamily 23-story building at the Holiday Inn site, a conditional use permit would not be...
Would be required now. But 20, you know, because we did a council's request across the board. But if you've gone back to 2014, it'd have been permitted by right.
By the way, for, if you, this sounds like a digression, but it's not. I got an invitation to tour the Icon Building in downtown Moffitt. It is probably the premier apartment building in Hampton Roads. I mean, it's very nicely done. It was done with historic tax credits, but, and the views of Portsmouth are fantastic. But, I mean, that would be a plus for our certain districts in Portsmouth. So did I state what I'm sensing correctly, that it depends on the district?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah. Nobody's going to want it in a community, but in, in where it is allowed in a downtown district.
It's not in the capital. The heart of the...
Their property out there has even been developed at some point.
Mayor, vice mayor, members of city council, members of planning commission, I, I would also suggest to you, just as an overlay for this discussion, certainly the issues that you see here are issues that have developed over the last eight years. And so four to eight years from now, there'll be a different concept, there'll create a different issue. Secondarily, as it relates to some of these issues, I would submit to you, it is unique to the property, not unique to the district. Because we have some districts where there's a residential section and some that are main thoroughfares and what one would accommodate in the main thoroughfare versus an interior part of a neighborhood would be slightly different and we've got transitions. We are a fairly close to built-out city and as we redevelop, those things are going to change. However, the Mary Jane building is, is zoned currently, if that building comes down, then that offers some opportunity given the acreage and the unique nature of that property and where it's situated. So, so we, I want everyone to be prepared that as staff presents these larger overlays in districts, there're going to be some unique features within those that may require use permits as being the most efficient way to address a particular parcel versus an entire district or perhaps the citywide issues. The only other thing I will say also as it relates to, and I'll give you the simplest cultural change. I can remember when I was in Suffolk and I came to Suffolk in 2011, the fights were about how many signs a fast food restaurant could have because our zoning in Suffolk had so many square feet of signage. And there was the battle as the more and more menus arrived on your drive-through, there used to be just one. You had one menu board, then they wanted two and three.
Two, three.
You're going to have some also potential unintended consequences because in Suffolk, the issue was the debate between the Wendy's that gets seven or eight menu boards or signs and someone who's in the shopping center that wants to hang a vinyl sign or stick one of the flags out on the street and the rules don't necessarily coincide. So there are going to be some unintended consequences, no matter what we do. But you should be aware of that and be aware that for a city like Portsmouth, some of these issues are just going to be completely unique to the development or the redevelopment of parcels.
Well, did you pick up enough from us?
I did.
This has really been a good conversation. We are talking about the next eight years, the next 10 years, so this is really important for... All right.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to go anymore. Just, and we're not going to go through this page by page. I didn't know if you had taken the time to look or if you, you know, wanted to save this for future conversation. What we provided you was, really just kind of makes, makes the point of our conversation about how our use table is set up, how uses are stratified by district and whether they need use permits or not. So for example, if you look at that first page there, we're talking about household living and you see different kinds of dwellings and then you see the use table talking about where they're permitted by right, where they need a use permit. If you see a slash or a blank, it's not permitted at all. We don't see a lot of these. One of the reasons we didn't, you know, make a big point, bring for you tonight is none of these are very common. On occasion, we might get a daycare use permit or something of that, of that nature. But I think the, the ones you just went over are the bulk of the use permits that will come before city council. If you had anything you wanted to make get a use permit, doesn't sound like that's your direction you want to be adding in. Obviously, you could do that. If there's things you want to take use permits away that are already required, that type of thing. Obviously, the use table, we'll be coming back. Staff has not come back with any staff recommendations. We're going to have some simplification ones from earlier conversations with council. For example, we have a, a number of different types of things defining sort of the same thing, a bunch of different definitions of parks. There's a fair amount of restrictions on city council's ability to put public facilities in certain places the zoning won't allow for, for whatever reason. It's a very unusual element of the zoning ordinance. We've got some specialty eating establishments that cause a problem.
Like what?
Like Krispy Kreme is a specialty eating establishment.
So special.
And it gives them, under the current code, it gave them special authority for their drive-through window. Just unusual stuff. Doesn't make any sense to me either. So we'll, we'll be making some staff recommendations.
Especially with the late show.
Well, it's like we're talking about a Dunkin' Donuts, sort of, when you move from donuts to having breakfast, are you still a specialty eating establishment? Or do you just change your zoning by changing your menu, which is always a bad idea? You know, we don't want to be doing that. So I don't know if you had any specific items from the rest of the use table or if you wanted to hold that for... the use table, or if you wanted to hold that for when we come back with our staff recommendations.
Well, I think we need to rely on staff. You know all of these. John can probably, he got it all in his head. We should depend on, you ought to direct us.
Yeah.
As the nonsense and the things that ought to be corrected and changes, because we, you know, we can go through and even know the frequency of.
Right.
Right.
Well, our intent would be to apply the philosophy we discussed tonight. We'll take that back. We'll look at the table. We'll make sure we're developer-friendly, that we're streamlining, that we're simplifying, and we're trying to not have too many places where it'd be very difficult for you to figure out, can I do that or not.
We're blessed with having two public universities, Norfolk State and Old Dominion. Dr. Patton and I met with the president of NSU last week, and it's my secret desire to get a campus of NSU here in Portsmouth. We've got the tri-city, so we do have Old Dominion here. Did we do that? Does it fit? I mean, I'm now concerned that our ordinance, that's a public facility. What restrictions does it place?
Well, there would be restrictions, but most likely, yes, it'd be allowed. But, for example, a number of different public safety buildings aren't allowed. Fire stations aren't allowed in certain places. To me, they're just certain things. When I apply what I think is common sense, council should have the ability to put what you want, public facility-wise, where you choose to place it. If you think you need a fire station, the zoning ordinance should not tell you can't have one there. So that is one of the things we have on our list. We're just going to clean out all of those places where there's unnecessary restriction on the ability of City Council to decide where it should be putting public facilities, per se.
What do you got in the book with that?
And so, we have, you know, five or six different definitions of parks we want to clean up.
Yes, okay with that?
Yes. We have dog parks.
It's not a specific, not a specific land use.
We could get them as soon as we could, if not required.
We would just have parks, and that'd be, if you want to turn it a public park, if you want it to be a dog park, make it a dog park. We're going to simplify this in that kind of way. You know, you don't need to have a-
Say, adult park, child park, dog park.
Yeah, skateboard park. We're not going to have all of those things. There's going to be a park, and then you'd have, you know, however you want to use the park, that's the City Council's business, really.
The use permit, not the use, the use table is more for-
Zoning administration.
For you all to use, right. Because today, when I looked at, you have in this document, 21 use tables. Well, first of all, when you look at it, you're lost with it's just so much there. And so, as Mr. Councilman Smith just said, you know, as I look to Mr. Bowen and his team, they're the experts to help guide. But I said to him, "We are not going through 21 use tables tonight, because we would be overwhelmed." So it's more for their use. They know what's on there, and they advise.
That's what I was afraid of. That's why I say what I say.
No, we're not going through them.
You guys didn't come to work.
We put that out there, so if there's something in particular you wanted to look at, we could find it for people to see what it is you had in mind. Our intention is when the staff will go back, and we'll work with the Planning Commission, we'll revise, we'll be coming back and say, "Here's a proposed revised use table." Mentioned a couple of things. Just looking at this one will be different, the future one. Those activity districts you see up there, those will all be gone. Those were referenced from the old 2005 Conference of Plan. The districts were never established, so you don't need those. The D2 district obviously will not be the way it was before. It will go back to more standard zoning, so there won't be a specific call-out for the D2 district. The D1 district we'll be working on, will likely want to propose some name changes to get away from the transect terminology, the T1, T3, 4, 5, and 6. So you'll see that shrink down a bit. And I do think, based on, just my one piece of hearing your comments, I think there's still some interest in pursuing some of this alternatives to making somebody get a use permit for, say, a special exception, especially dealing with design issues. And we can certainly work on that type of thing, where you're going to want design standards. What I always tell people is, remember one of the zoning ordinance? This is the law. This is not policy. It's not a plan. If it says your setback's 15 feet, it doesn't mean 14 and a half, or it's 15. And there's almost no administrative authority granted by the General Assembly for staff to move that stuff around. So you want to be very careful about it. And then if you want to have somebody have the ability to make some slight modifications, you have two options. You can do a special exception, which is more like a design-type of a thing. Or it could be a variance if they got an odd-shaped lot, or some unusual set of circumstances, and go that route.
I have one more tiny comment. And this goes a lot to what you were saying. In order to make it all user-friendly and generationally-friendly, is there any discussion of having this slightly comprehensive plan where it's links in here?
Well, a couple of things we're going to do. And this is really more for, where's Deborah White back? You're really municode-fundling.
The municode.
So we can stop paying as much money as we're paying to maintain. You're going to see a lot of the, what you're going to see is two things will come out of the end product when we get there. A lot of the graphics that are in your current zoning ordinance are going to go away. You'll have a design manual that will be established to explain what those things are. One of the problems we have, as you can imagine, you modify a definition that has a drawing with it. How do you modify the drawing to now match? And that's also much more expensive for municode to just host it for the city. So, you know, what we're going to do is turn this into a much more simple, like a Word document, basically. And then you'll have a manual, which will have more of the descriptive graphics that would go along with that. Whether we get to the point where you can kind of work your way around, like the conference plan, we'll look at that. But it's a little bit more than what we're doing at the moment.
This is not related to the zoning ordinance, per se, but it's our relationship between the City Council and the Planning Commission. Localities in Virginia have used this, and Portsmouth has in the past, where something's on a short fuse, whether it's rezoning or conditional use permit. The law prescribes the calendar, and if it goes to the Planning Commission and then the council, it may be outside the calendar of the applicant, and we may miss an opportunity. What is Planning Commission's, what are your individual and collective thoughts about joint public hearings between the Planning Commission and the council on that rare occasion where the calendar really is important, and we can shorten it by having our meetings together?
My opinion is, that's a great idea, because that, to me, is the essence of being developer-friendly. I mean, we're going to have a special meeting to bypass, you know, our own mechanisms to that delay in their mind.
I mean, you still have your meeting. You act on it. And then, in a sense, you act on it. We receive your recommendation, and then we consider it. And it's a process that's shortened. I support that personally, because I think it's effective. It's effective when I've seen it work. There are those who feel, though, it's a slap at the Planning Commission, because it says, "How cool is it to have the City Council watching what you do?" I don't see it that way. And I wanted to make sure I, we hear what your feelings are.
I think it's a great idea.
I don't think that we have an issue with it. I think that what you might run into is a problem with the public.
Public comment.
Because the public, here's our discussion, then they've got two weeks to think about what their response is, and then they come to you. So I understand what you're trying to do, and I don't think that anybody on the planning cares if you sit there, you know, right beside us. That's not a big deal.
Council members, if I may, that's not really an issue. We've done that before. On a City Council meeting night, we've had the Planning Commission to meet, to deal with their issue. They adjourn, and then council during their regular meeting. It's all happening on the same night. The biggest thing is, like you were saying, public notification. You would have to have two public hearings. The biggest thing is the public notification. And Regina in my office, we work very well together, and we could post the notification. So that could be covered. We could take care of that. Don't let that be a hindrance for you.
Yeah. And I just want to make sure that there wasn't, we were not hurting your-
No.
You get to watch us on TV anyway.
It wouldn't be often that-
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Let's say we had Amazon.
But I think it sends a good message to-
That you're willing-
See that we're willing to do that.
Working together.
You have Amazon, you can call me 3 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah. That's all we had for tonight.
Thank you.
And one point, Mr. Bowen, I was talking today. All of this, our goal is to have everything done and completed by the end of 2019. So we're here. We're going to be working with you, work through the year, and have to complete it within the year.
Amy, what issues, other than this, would you all like to, are not issues, but matters? Anything?
Do you, do you guys have any applicants? We're starting to get a little light on members.
Oh, yeah. No, we know that. You have one that's resigned, and we'll work hard to fill that. That's a good question. Thank you, friends.
I'd like to be asked this at times, so.
We're good.
Yeah, but pick somebody good. I can think of a couple folks I'd rather not have on the commission.
All the questions tonight, really, and all the comments.
Thanks, Mr. Bowen.
If we can adjourn this part of the meeting, and so if you want to adjourn your meeting, that would be good.
There being no further comment or discussion, we will adjourn the Planning Commission's special meeting with City Council.
And we'll take a five-minute break to allow the transition. Welcome to stay, but we have more.
I was just going to say, um, Mr. Young-
So council adjourn for five minutes.
I'll find out.
And we need our car.
Okay. I can get another bite of cookie.
You found a box with cookie in it?
I did. Took some bite of cookie.
It is approved. And I told him the other week-
Powdered faka.
Yeah, I told him the other day, I wanted to get them for false advertising, because in big print it says five calories, but in fine print it says per two-fifths of a packet.
Two-fifths?
Yeah, a little bit of word down there. You magnifying glass readers.
Well, who's going to have two-fifths of a packet?
I know. That's what I said.
False advertising.
Wow.
We're going to wait for Deborah.
Talking about a fifth?
Yeah, talking about a fifth.
Not two-fifths. That way you walk balanced. You get a hook on each finger.
So only pour 40% into your thing. That's ridiculous.
It is.
I figured that's just 12 and a half calories they don't add.
Put it up on there.
So they got, but I like how they print, so it's real big.
Yeah.
Two-fifths? It was male, oh, Ms. White.
Where did you start with?
I don't know where she went. I was trying to-
Yes, she did. She's coming now.
I was trying to find, um, I was trying to find Ms. Councilwoman Lucasburg.
She came out, but she went to the office.
She's in somebody.
She's right here.
There she is.
She didn't even know where you were.
Now we can start.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, we will continue this evening with two presentations. The first presentation, Mr. Robert Moore, Economic Development Director, will provide an update on the city's year-to-date economic development investment through the Departmental Collaboration Information Technology and Economic Development and the CIMSS Incorporated. This evening's presentation will unveil the Portsmouth Sail, a mobile application available for both iOS and Android platforms. Mr. Daniel Jones will assist Mr. Moore with his presentation. Mr., no, excuse me. I have one more to read. The final presentation this evening, the Finance Department and Cherry Beckett LLC, the city's auditors, are working together to deliver the FY 2018 CAFA and audit. Mrs. Cheryl Spivey, Chief Financial Officer, will brief City Council on two key components of this year's audit process. Mrs. Krista Edoff, a partner with CBH, is scheduled to present the audit status to City Council tomorrow night, with a resolution for adoption of the audit coming before City Council in December 11. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, I will provide a brief update on the economic activity in our city. We are very excited to share this information with you all. But I want to say two things, or a couple of things, before we get started. One, this information is year-to-date. This is not information that we normally share this early. We wait till the end of the year, gather the information, and then put it out in a, in the form of an economic update or annual report. And that normally is put out in association with the state of the city.
Okay. Year-to-date, defined as calendar or fiscal?
Calendar. We go calendar. So this is from January 1 until November 20, 2018. But that being said, again, because we do this calendar year, we normally release this information to the public, if you will, at State of the City. This is something that we have prepared so that the mayor will be able to share the details of this information at State of the City. So I don't want to steal this thunder tonight, so I'm not going to. We will give some brief information, and enough to get everyone excited, but the mayor will hit the home on out the park. So with that said, let's talk business, like you see on the screen there. In economic development, our focus has been, over the last, let's say, 12, 14 months now that I've been director, the focus has been in four key areas. We have created a strategic plan. That strategic plan is focused on four areas, including business retention and recruitment, a business-friendly environment, creating the right infrastructure, and making sure that we have talent recruitment. Now, I'm going to back up again and say that economic development is a team sport, and we chose these four strategic areas because we will not do these by ourselves. Certainly, number one is our job in economic development, business retention and recruitment. Creating that business-friendly environment, we do that in collaboration with the Planning Department, the zoning department, and building permits. Infrastructure, we certainly do that with Mr. Wright and his team over at, in engineering. And then the talent recruitment, we do that with our workforce partners, like the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, or what was formerly Opportunity, Inc., as well as ODU and TCC and the like. So I do want to say thank you to our partners, because without them, a lot of this would not happen. And I also want to thank council, because you all have focused on and put a focus on economic development, and that vision of having a new city ordinance, and a new zoning ordinance, and a new comprehensive plan. We've been able to have some, see the fruits of our labor, if you will. When we talk about pursuing new businesses, you see the six targeted industries up there. All of those make sense. Maritime logistics, small business, modeling simulation, retail, information services. Those six target industries, to date, we have worked on 52 projects as a staff. But those are a lot of projects. And that's a large number as compared to where we have been in the last several years. We have also had seven scheduled trips with our partners at HREDA, the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, and with VEDP, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. So basically, our regional group and the state. Yes, sir.
Two things. Because we are televising this, it might be good for the public to know what advanced manufacturing is.
So advanced manufacturing, we all, the best way to say it is, your companies, there are companies out there that make these specialized widgets, whether it's for a company like Astile, who does some type of chainsaw, all the way down to our very own Lynx. They have a certain technology that they utilize when they create the ductwork that they utilize. And that's a specialized use. They have their own technology and their own way of doing things. That's what we kind of consider that advanced manufacturing. Those jobs are, what we consider are those higher-paying jobs. The average salary on those jobs are right around $55, $60,000 a year. And that's why we focus on those. We have the industrial space and the industrial areas and buildings to house those type of users. I mean, it makes sense with the shipyard being right next door, in our backyard, literally. the port being in our backyard, and companies like Port Rail Crane that puts together the cranes and so forth, so that makes sense for us.
And the other two, the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, can you brief council on its current transition that it's going through?
Yes, sir. So, the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance is the regional group that currently represents about 11 localities, and that's the majority of the South Side, and then Hampton, Newport News, Pecoson, and I'm missing someone in there, I'm sure. But they are going through a transition right now. The CEO, Mr. Rick Weddle, is currently set to retire December 31st, so January 1, they will be in transition with some new leadership. We are still working through that process as far as who that will be, and we are working closely with, as economic development directors, and with our liaisons such as the mayor on the Board of Directors, we are working to determine who that will be on an interim basis going forward.
For council's information, I'm serving on the selection committee, and most likely we'll end up with an interim candidate that will give us an interim director, and that will give us time to find a more permanent director, because this is a public-private partnership. We need to find somebody that can cross both.
Both lines. Yes, sir.
As far as the state, the Virginia Economic Development.
Partnership.
Partnership. The one comment I would make is that it's woefully underfunded.
Yes.
You want to elaborate?
I will. It is an underfunded part of our state economy. The state economic development group does not currently have, in my opinion, and I believe the mayor shares the same opinion, they do not have enough funding to really truly market the state as they should in other areas. We did land, certainly, a half of a headquarters with Amazon, but however, that was at a cost. A lot of the marketing budget was utilized to make that happen. So, while they are underfunded, they are working diligently. Stephen Murray has been a great president and CEO over the last year or so, and we are working closely with him as well, again, as you can see there on our seven trips, within our seven trips that we're taking as a staff. So, we're staying close to the state, and everything that they do affects us and vice versa.
And this is really important. Think of yourselves as being the consultant that your client is looking for a place to do a new facility, and you're doing your work in Utah. You're doing it at the computer, and if Virginia is eliminated, we're eliminated.
Right.
If Hampton Roads is eliminated, we're eliminated.
Right.
It's tough to get back in the game when they eliminate the whole state, or it's tough to get back in the game when they eliminate the region.
Yes.
So, the important thing is to stay in the game as long as possible, and it's going to take good leadership at the Hampton Roads regional level, and it's going to take a more robust budget at the state level.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
No, no, I'm going to steal yours in a little bit, so that's fine. We also have multiple marketing missions that we're taking on our own. One thing that I see consistently is, if there are any football fans in the house here, you will see commercials and advertisements for other localities in our locality. You will see, more specifically, New York, Charlotte, South Carolina, Atlanta, they have commercials in our neck of the woods. So, we now have a commercial in their neck of the woods, those same regions. I'm going to play it for you now. I'm hoping that it will play.
A dependable workforce, a vibrant infrastructure, and most of all, ready access for employers, families, businesses, retailers, developers, restaurants, and lovers of art, culture, and entertainment. At the center of it all, access Portsmouth today.
Thank you. And that was, again, another collaboration between our marketing department, our retained marketing group in economic development. We're excited about that, and we've heard rave reviews. People have called and said, I like the commercial. I forgot the commercial was showing here because I'm so worried about it showing in Charlotte and all these other places, but we are very excited about that. When it comes to retaining businesses, our Business Visitation Program, or Biz Visit, as we call them, I have to give a kudos to my staff. You always hear me say I have the best staff in the city, but our staff has put together since July 1, we have conducted 83 Biz Visits. So, we've met with 83 existing businesses between the three of us in our office. That's a lot of work on the ground, a lot of work in and out of the office. You will also hear me say that we are not doing our job if we are in the office. We should be out meeting with businesses. And the fruits of that labor, we've had five different expansion projects that have come because of us going out and meeting with those groups. Can't tell you all about those right now. They are in some of our numbers, but we have, three of our top taxpayers will be expanding this year, and as soon as we can make that announcement, we will. But it comes from us sitting down and meeting and talking with them about their plans and really understanding what they can and want to do. When it comes to advancing our workforce, Hire Portsmouth, we have kind of put the group together, and we are working towards having our initial kickoff meeting early next year to really talk about the workforce. If you read the paper today, you will see that ship repair and ship building, we know how important that is to our economy. They are looking to build, they have 287 carriers that they have right now, or ships now. They're trying to go to 355. If you do one carrier at a time, it'll take you, I think it was 2050 or 2052, to get that to happen. There's a shortage of ship repair and ship builders, so we need to make sure we have that workforce here, and it's great because we have that availability right now. TCC, on December 10th, will open their Building Trades Academy right here in Portsmouth at 3303 Airline Boulevard, and that Building Trades Academy will have the welding, that maritime designation, so we're excited about that. And former governor and now Senator Tim Kaine will be attending that event as well, so we are very excited about that. But this is an opportunity for us to reach back into our public school system, to reach into our vocational system, and bring out some of those folks that can make a very good living doing some of those things. And finally, we have to make sure we assess our effectiveness, and our effectiveness is based off of what we call smart metrics, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-based. Those are all, we need to make sure we're assessing what we're doing and making sure that we're being effective at what we're doing as a staff. And how we're going to measure those, we're going to look at jobs created, wages paid, investments attracted, revenues earned, okay? So, you take all of those four things, and you roll them all together, and there's some metrics that we have. We look at the investment from a standpoint of land transactions, and let me just kind of break that down a little bit. We look at land sales, land that is staying on the tax roll but may have changed hands, land that was previously not on the tax roll, either the EDA or the city held it, and that is now back on the tax roll. We're also looking at lease holdings, people signing new leases to be in the city. We look at those as well. Then we're looking at investment from a standpoint of taking that property and making some type of improvement, whether they add a building, whether they add some equipment, things of that nature, to their business. Then we also look at jobs created and jobs retained. So, I am happy to report this year, we have done just that. And again, I thank my staff, I thank my colleagues in the other departments, and certainly council for what I am about to show you, because this is all trickle-down effect of what you all have done. I can tell you that in 2016, we started off with $8 million. 2017, we did $44 million. I'm happy to report that in 2018, we have $104 million in investment in our city. That is a considerable increase. Let me break down that number a little bit so you kind of understand where we are. Again, when I just talked about the land sales and the lease transactions, those are kind of that shot in the arm, one time, you're going to feel the effect, okay? That's probably, again, it's already been on the tax roll, it's already been, you're already receiving taxes in some way, shape, or form, you may receive some new taxes in there. Where we are is that we're at about a little over $45, $46 million, but the rest of that money, that, say, $60, almost $60 million, that's all new tax base. So, if I go and I just use basic math and use $1.30 for every $100, okay, that gives us a tax generation, again, based off $104 million, of about $730,000. That's a great number for us, I think, especially where we've been over the last few years. We've affected 1,123 jobs. We have created 300 jobs at an average salary of about $48,000, and we've retained, based off of those five, or actually, we're at about seven or eight different retention projects, expansion projects, we've saved 823 jobs, okay? That's a sizable investment into our city. That investment has caused the need for staff to make some investment in itself. So, what we have done is, from a technology standpoint, we've added CoStar, which is the premier property management and database in the world. We are now licensed users of that. We were not previously before. We also have Salesforce, which is what we call a CRM or a customer relationship management system. We utilize that now to track those 52 projects. So, if Dr. Patton comes to me and says, Mr. Moore, I need to know and understand what's the investment been so far? How many jobs have we created? What's the square footage total that we've affected or had an impact on this year? We can pull that and track that via Salesforce. And finally, because we've done all that, we also need to make sure, as you talked about previously, we need to make sure we stay in the game. We need to make sure we have the ability to stay in front of individuals, because most of the time, they know about us before we know that they know about us, and that's because they're looking at our digital footprint, they're coming to our website, but now they can come to an app. You may recall back in February, April, when we had the retreat and then some follow-up meetings, we talked about the properties that the city currently holds, the EDA currently holds, PRHA, and how we will dispose of those, how do we market those. Well, now we have a new app. It is a collaboration between our IT Department, Economic Development, and CIMSS Incorporated, our headquarters right here in Portsmouth. We now have the Portsmouth Sale App. Sales stands for Site Availability and Information Locator. Now, I'm just the salesman in this thing, so I'm going to turn it over to the technology expert, but Mr. Daniel Jones is going to walk you through after Dr. Patton this app.
Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, Members of Council, this idea was generated by the two gentlemen who are standing before you, and through their vision, they went to the CIMSS, Dr. Garcia, with their idea, and what you're going to see tonight is something that everybody's going to want in the country.
What a clever name.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. It's our pleasure to bring before you the Portsmouth Sale App. Now, this, as Dr. Patton has alluded to, this will be available both on the iOS and Android platform, so no matter what type of mobile device you're using, you'll be able to use it. That'll be done on iPhone, iPad, it's agnostic, whatever you want to use it. So, as you can see, there's two main tabs at the bottom, a welcome screen, which is where you're at now, and a property screen. The property screen we'll get to in just a second. Your welcome screen contains the three access pillars for economic development of lifestyle, workforce, and infrastructure. So, if somebody clicks or goes to the lifestyle, it goes into each detail about what the lifestyle in Portsmouth is. Same way with workforce, the Hire Portsmouth, as Mr. Moore alluded to, what is within the workforce that we currently have. And then, of course, the infrastructure, where we're located, the infrastructure, hospitals, airports, how to get product in and out, basically. So, the real jewel of the app is the property screen. So, to get to, and this can be, of course, downloaded from any device, anywhere in the world.
Anywhere in the world.
So, to get this business attraction in front of potential candidates that want to come to do business, they can pull this app up. So, as you can see, there's a dot that's coming off that's showing where we are now, City Hall, okay? So, if you want to look at your first property we want to show, that's going to be 1021 High Street. So, automatically, you can see that it's 2.957 acres, approximately 48,000 square foot. It's in the D2 Form Based Code section. So, if you want to look at the street view, it pulls up the Google image of the street. You're able to.
You have to get on the plane. No, you don't have to get on the plane.
Look all the way around.
You're putting me out of business.
Also, if you want to look at the real estate part of that property, this pulls directly from what our city assessor has that shows the assessments, anything regarding the sales date, the D book. All the ins and outs regarding the property. And if by some chance you were interested in this property, you click Contact Us, and what that does, this allows you to fill out your contact, and more importantly, when we receive it, it shows exactly what address that you were interested in. So, there's no guessing game if you're contacting us.
And very quickly, I think the other key thing to point out is, can we go to BASF very quickly? If you look at the top of the screen, some of the most important features that developers want to see, how far are we from an interstate? 2.7 miles. How far are we from the airport? How far are we from the port? This all changes and adjusts based off where you are in the application.
How do you track people using this, and how do you capture, once they hit submit?
That would be the backend metrics that we would receive, downloads, how many people download it, how many times it's accessed, Contact Us forms that are sent back and so forth.
Does it get down to geographic dispersion of the use?
Should.
Yeah. So, one more quick thing, and then I'll show you. If you look at one of the property that is marketed by an agency, if you click the flyer, pulls up exactly what it is.
Isn't that amazing?
But yes, sir, to answer your question, we should be able to see, just like on a website, analytics, where they came from, where they were searching, what they were searching for, so on and so forth.
And maybe you don't know, maybe you don't want to look through all the properties, you can do a filtered search. So, if you, say you want an acreage between 4... I'm guessing here, 4 and 10?
Yeah.
It automatically shows you that there's five properties. So, you want to see that? You click University Boulevard?
And don't worry. It won't take you to any other city.
No.
Just same way with... Advocacy, who owns that? Who owns that property? Do you know, Robert?
Yes, sir. That's John Peterson, the Peterson Company, Terry Peterson Company. That is, the property is directly behind Mass 1.
Yeah.
It's about 7 acres, yes, 7.34 acres there.
Is Harvey Lindsey handling the broker?
No. Harvey Lindsey represents, that brokerage firm represents the building of Mass 1, but that is directly with Fiona.
And then, of course, the additional filters, if you're looking for square footage, particular zoning, enterprise zone, hub zone, whatever that may be. And with that, that's the Portsmouth Sale App.
Isn't that amazing?
Very good. Any questions?
Is it live now?
No. It will be.
We wanted you all to see it first.
We needed to receive the wonderful artwork from Mr. Pace, who created the logo for the Sale App. So, once we have that now, and some other tweaks that we need to make. So once we have that now, and some other tweaks that we need to make, um, we'll be posting. As soon as it is posted, we will let you on.
And there's that timeframe from when we executed, Apple and Android have to approve it, and it goes through their process before they make it live on the store.
And is there a, what's the cost range to get the app onto your device?
Free.
It's free, but we are in some discussion. We'll just leave it at that. It's in the legal hands.
How would we make it free?
It's in discussion, Mayor, with legal.
There's some opportunities there. It will be free to download.
Right.
Uh, but there are some opportunities that could be associated with the application.
Additional opportunities.
So how are we gonna define success, though, when we got ten thousand?
We're gonna define, we define success as we sold these properties. That's how we're gonna do it.
But as far as this app is concerned?
Yes, we will look at the, um, we look at the average of, of users, you know, compared to, you know, what we have, certainly when you first have the application available, there's gonna be a flood of people that download it, but how does that, how do we stabilize that? Where does it level off? And, again, just the activity, where are we seeing the activity coming from? Uh, because we're gonna utilize this to measure a number of different things, but more specifically, when you look at the commercial that we have, if we're having it in certain regions, are we seeing an uptick in those regions, looking at our application? So it's kind of a one hand washing the other.
Two questions. Okay. First question, there's, there's ninety-one properties that we currently have that we're managing. Um, and the second, the commercial that we had, um, is any of those funding dollars coming from HR, EDP, EDA, and, um, Virginia EDP? Are there any cost sharing in that, or does it all come from us?
That all comes from us. So we're only showcasing Portsmouth in those commercials. So we're out marketing literally just Portsmouth, not the region. We're talking about the, the access that we provide to the region, but that is all coming from us and about us.
Do we still contribute on a per capita basis to Hampton Roads?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yeah.
Is that, is that still, was it a dollar?
It's ninety, ninety-five cents per capita.
And that's a, that's a dollar.
Yeah, that's the problem, because most of the budget is made up of public dollars, and they need more private partners in that. And so that's why it's important to get a good headlight, uh, in the next director.
Yes.
The, uh, no, the commercial, will the commercial be able to be linked on the app, so if somebody going into the app would be able to see that commercial?
Yes. We will, we will, we can make any tweaks from here from, and also, we will make it to where the application, um, will essentially be available on the website as well. So a, a version of that will be on our website. So if for some reason you're just at your desktop, and you say, I wanna look up Portsmouth, you can do that.
It'll be there.
And let me go back to, and Phil, that's one of the reasons why I kinda threw my elbows to get on the selection committee, because I think the public sector needs to be represented. We've got the biggest amount of contributions.
Scanning the game?
Yeah.
Scanning the game, you gotta be at the table.
Gotta nationwide search, or is that...
Yes, it is.
Maybe there'll be some open office out there that doesn't wanna move.
Maybe.
Listen here.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Mayor, speaking to your question of how do you measure success, I think you can use the old television marketing, uh, model. Whenever you get a hit from anywhere outside of your television area, certainly, you know, that, uh, expansion, that interest outside of the areas we reach by other means is certainly some indication that you've got folks outside of our region, outside of our MSA, outside of our television region chiming in and have, showing some interest. So, um, certainly, th- those are the kinds of things I think we should be looking for.
Well, you know, how do you, just like, how do you get a high school student to tear off the application for a particular college? How do you get someone who's in Arizona to download this app?
Well, part of it is gonna be from a marketing standpoint, now that we have the app, we were working on some, we have some, we have about four commercials that are done, two fifteen-second slots and then two thirty-second slots. We can tweak those as necessary. Uh, also, we're gonna make sure our, um, lead behinds, whether it's our, our personal business cards or what have you, have a, potentially a QR code or some type of way to just scan, and the app downloads on your, on your phone. Um, however, what I will say is, uh, when we look at the other opportunities that Dr. Patton was speaking of, and we look at, um, the opportunity to, um, really take this to the next level and have it in front of the, um, brokers, like a Harvey Lindsey, like a CBRE, uh, those will be the individuals that will more than likely utilize this the most and provide us the most opportunity, um, when it comes to, um, how we utilize this further.
Very good. Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Now, members of council, we will bring Mrs. Spivey for a brief update on our, um, CAFR and audit. Ms. Spivey. Now, we're gonna do EDA, PPS, PPEA next. She just has two little, two, two little words on her forehead.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Cherry Beckett, or the independent auditors who are performing the city's annual audit, um, have been on site since early October, um, performing, um, an audit of the city's transactions and processes. Uh, the finance staff has prepared the fiscal two thousand eighteen comprehensive annual financial statements, which are commonly referred to as the CAFR. We did encounter two significant accounting challenges, um, as we were preparing the statements, um, that I, you know, want to brief you on tonight. The first of those was, um, capital project cleanup, and, um, and the second is Gatsby seventy-five OPEB. The, um, for capital projects, capital project accounting must be in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. As a result of the CFO transition this year, both Ms. Ann Seward, um, who served as interim CFO, um, prior to my arrival, and then when I came on board, we both realized that the capital project accounting was not in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. Some of the things that are required, um, by, uh, we refer to generally accepted accounting principles as GAAP, are that, um, non-capital operating expenditures need to be expensed in the year incurred. That construction and process should be recorded as a non-depreciable asset until the construction is completed. Capital, completed projects should be capitalized in the year completed, and depreciation should begin that year. And, um, and one of my first initiatives as CFO was to embark on a capital project cleanup, and that project, um, has identified a material amount of expenditures which were not recognized in the correct year. The project cleanup will result in prior period adjustments, um, in both the governmental and the enterprise funds. But we've, um, we've done, um, our, a deep dive, you know, with the attempt that, that we're fixing it all this year. Cherry Beckett, um, do, you, they have an understanding of the project that we embarked on, and therefore, their auditors are doing a much more in-depth review of how we're handling our capital projects. And that, um, that was very, that project was very labor-intensive, and, uh, and, you, so, you know, put us where we, where we are today with our CAFR. The second is Gatsby...
Let's make sure we...
Okay.
All right.
How many projects were affected by the, the cleanup, and how is it gonna affect us?
Yes.
Going forward?
It's more than a hundred projects. Um, I don't, I don't have an exact count, but I can, I can, I can get that to you. And the effect of the cleanup is, um, beginning fund balance will probably have a prior period adjustment of, right now, it looks like about twenty million dollars that will decrease prior year, um, fund balance. Now, go back. In the enterprise funds, it, it actually goes to, onto the fund statement. So like, public utilities will be most affected, because it'll actually be on the fund statements. So there's fund statements, like general fund, public utilities, and that, there's also an overall statement. You know, that's what we call the enterprise-wide statement. For the governmental funds, with, um, general fund being the largest, um, the, uh, the result of that will not hit the fund balance in the general fund, but will hit the, um, the overall accounting. So when we look at the, the general fund specifically, you, um, a user of that, of that fund statement would not notice this change, but overall, they would notice that our change in net position is starting out at a lower level.
And this does, it does not affect our bond rating anywhere?
It, um, it, it, it should not, because we're coming in with, with clean financial statements. So the, um, the change, you know, will be disclosed in the statements, and, um, you know, the Cherry Beckett partner will be here tomorrow, and she'll, um, you, she'll talk to you about, um, something they'll be reporting relating to that change.
It's much like having four cups and ten marbles. You're just rearranging where the marbles, what cups they go into.
That's, um, yes.
That's, that's a good analogy. The other thing...
Phil. So that, that will be noted in the CAFR as a finding?
Yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. But it's a correction.
Yes, it's a finding, um, and it's, I've, I've have discussed with the partners, it doesn't quite seem fair. It's a finding this year, because we...
That you found.
We found it this year.
We found it. That's it, we found it.
Yes.
Will that be, will that be noted in the CAFR?
It, um, she, uh, I have not seen the write-up, but she is...
We've met with her, we've shared our concerns. The other thing, this goes back, how many years did you go back?
It's, um, most of the decade.
But it goes back years into the nineties. So it has been a complete cleanup. Uh, everything is in line and how it should be done, and, um, when we met with Mrs. Edoff, she acknowledged that, um, they didn't see it.
Isn't that weird, they never brought that up?
But, um, we have had to, uh, we had to interim, and then Mrs., um, Spivey, who came and immediately, within your first week, almost, she, she sold.
And the, uh, what, what's been changed to ensure that it wouldn't happen again?
Well, it's, it's, she's going through, following the practices of finance.
Right. The controls, there should be controls in place that, at, at least annually, and, you know, maybe more likely quarterly, there'd be a reconciliation of what projects are finished, what projects aren't. Is there anything in our CIP that can't be capitalized, so we go ahead and expense it? And, um, so it's just tighter controls.
And when do you realize it as an, uh, asset, and then start depreciating?
That's, that's right. So, you know, so, you know, for example, a, a project that takes, you know, multiple years, multi-years to complete, you know, once it's complete, we need to, um, recognize it's an asset and start depreciating it, and not leaving it in, um, construction and progress, where it's sitting there not being depreciated.
So where, okay.
This isn't something that the, our auditors could've picked up, or?
We, we don't understand.
The answer is yes. I mean, they could, but they, I said they could've.
But they did.
They did it several years, don't they?
But they, yes.
What's their explanation on why they didn't?
Uh, we didn't get an explanation.
Uh, but she, she will be here tomorrow.
Right.
I think they do a sampling of it, and sometimes it's...
I, I think that's probably...
I think sampling, they also, you know, rely on the information, you know, somewhat rely on, on the information that's given to them.
Well, what they do is a recapitulation, right? In other words, they, you know, two and two, we say two and two is four, they just go behind us and agree with our figures.
That is pretty much what we're seeing.
Yes, I mean...
That's a good explanation.
They should do their job, man. We paid a lot of money for that.
We don't owe them that much.
Yeah, and there's not that many firms that respond to public accounts like ours.
That's right.
It's getting really narrow, that's the problem.
It is, it's, it's a limited pool. It's, it's, um, firms now, you either specialize that in governmental or not.
All right. Okay, we're good?
Okay, ready for the next?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The next is Gatsby seventy-five OPEB. Gatsby seventy-five is a new governmental accounting standard that was implemented for this year. It reflects an overhaul of the standards for accounting and financial reporting for post-employment benefits other than pensions. The largest one being, uh, retiree healthcare. Gatsby seventy-five requires disclosure of more information in the financial statements, and the reporting requirements are more extensive than previous standards. The changes require, required additional information to be provided to our consultants who prepared, um, the actuarial report, which shows the unfunded actual, actuarial accrued liability calculations. For example, age-specific claims cost must now be used for each individual on the city's healthcare plan, um, regard, you know, regardless of, um, of their age, you know, regardless of their age or the chances that they will actually, um, use our, you know, post-employment benefits, so our retiree healthcare.
But they age out at sixty-five, right?
They, um...
Because, but they're, they're no longer on our plan.
That's, that's right, and that's included in the, you know, in the calculations of...
So it's those that are younger than sixty-five but are retired?
That's, that is correct. Yes. So, so they take the way we manage our plan, our plan, and ca, and, and make calculations. This year, the, um, the calculations were much more detailed and specific, and, uh, and we were, um, finance staff was challenged in, in getting the information to, you know, exactly the way it was needed. The good thing is, we, we have the report, we received it last week, and, um, and because of changes we made, um, in, you know, funding the three million dollars, putting it into an OPEB trust that has the ability to earn, um, more money than if the city was holding it and investing it in, um, you know, in the types of investments that the city can invest in, the combination of that and having this more specific detailed information for the calculations, our liabilities significantly declined.
Are dependents included in that, or only retirees?
It's, dependents are included, so, so we had to also identify any dependents receiving our healthcare.
You could have that future situation where the, there's an age differential, where the retiree ages out, turns sixty-five or sixty-six, which you got...
Their dependents remain.
Younger spouse.
And, um, and, um, Ms. Gooden would, would know more specifically how our plan works as far as that goes, um, but, but...
Phil, what was the decrease?
Okay, the decrease is, we went from, um, more, uh, the, the unfunded liability, um, for the previous year had been estimated at, uh, more than seventy million, and we dropped to thirty, um, close to thirty million.
Wow.
Um, so it's, it, um, it was, it was kind of a...
It's the first year?
A, you know, the, you know, the first year of having the money in the trust, and, um, and then getting the more precise information to the actuary was, you know, is well worth, is well worth it.
It's a paradox, because Gatsby on OPEB usually costs you money.
That's exactly right.
Saves you money.
Right. So this, this year, this, this time, it worked, it worked to our benefit.
It took a lot to get it, but we got it.
Um, so as we said, um, Ms. Edoff, the partner of Cherry Beckett, will be, um, here tomorrow night, um, presenting, um, her audit update, and we expect the audited CAFR to be, um, ready for adoption on December eleventh.
Questions? Good catch, good job.
Thank you. Mayor, I have one more thing. I have one more thing.
We have one.
It's just unreal, I mean, I'm sorry.
I have one.
I said, good catch.
I just said it's unreal. Thirty, seventy to thirty?
Oh, yeah, that difference.
Yeah.
Um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, um, as you are aware, the City of Portsmouth received an unsolicited prepar... received an unsolicited proposal from Amada Hoffler for the construction of a new Portsmouth City Hall and Public Safety Building on proper property either owned by the city or other entities in May of 2018. The city accepted the proposal, and in accordance with the guidelines of the PPEA, provided the opportunity for competing proposals from other interested parties. The city received one additional proposal, which subsequently was withdrawn by the party that submitted it. Tonight, Mr. Michael Ammons, purchasing officer, will provide the rationale for the city manager's request to City Council, or internal staff to begin to review and evaluate the accepted proposal. With Mr. Ammons coming forward, on the agenda tomorrow night would be a proposal, would be a resolution in the city manager's report for your consideration, Mr. Ammons.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The PPA provides for you to, for the city, once a proposal is received, to either evaluate in one of two ways. One, you can hire a set of professionals, professional engineers, architects, and certify public accountants to evaluate the proposal. Or the second way is to, council can, can by resolution allow city staff to perform the evaluation. There's multiple reasons for that. To take, to keep it as impartial as possible, the recommendation this time is to allow the city staff to do the proposal evaluation that will also help eliminate potential conflicts of interest from any professional firm that we were using this area to help evaluate. So, any questions?
Questions?
So we're saying inside?
Inside, yeah.
Yes, sir.
What you're saying is that if we selected an engineer, they may have a conflict.
Yes, there's a possibility.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody got any problems with that?
No.
How long would that typically take?
For the evaluation? Within the next two months. That's an estimated timeline.
60 days.
Yes, yes, sir, plus 60 days.
All right. So we'll expect this resolution tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That concludes my presentation.
Okay, we do have a need for a closed meeting. Is there a motion?
I'm going to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, for discussion of an assignment, appointment, or contract, contracts of City Council appointees, and B, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7, for the purpose of consulting with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, specifically regarding the commons at Portsmouth Center, and C, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A6, for discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made publicly, made public initially, the financial interest of the city would be adversely affected, specifically regarding the potential development of a new city hall.
Need discussion on the motion. Adam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Sumis?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Ruff?